All right. Good evening. I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 18, 2019. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier. The lady to my left is recording an audio version and Fall River Government TV, Alex Mello, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, John Frank, James Corkin, Attorney Carolyn Marisette, Vice Chair, Attorney Gregory Brilliant, and alternate member Dan Dupere. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Rock, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Britain, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, amended?
Yes.
I declare the July 18, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks and the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed activity is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The newly adopted city charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. A sign-in sheet is on the table in the back of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of Fall River's zoning ordinances is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot and should not rely on the online zoning ordinance. I won't be able to listen to Agenda Item Number Three. Strike that. Can you listen to it quick or no?
I don't know why I would have a stand. I think I can.
Okay. So if Attorney Brilliant doesn't have a comment, then I'm not going to listen to Agenda Item Number Three or Agenda Item Number Four. We'll take the Agenda Items in order. Are there any questions before we begin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Do I sit on Oh One? Did I already get started last meeting, so should I not sit?
If you...
Is it continuing?
You weren't there. It was coming back, yeah.
Did you give evidence?
Two, three, four. Yeah, so if you weren't here, we'll do it with this five.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
One, two, three, four. You sit back. You don't have to. If you didn't, it's over here. Dan Dupere, okay? So we'll stop. John wasn't here. You were here.
I was not here.
So who wasn't? So who were there? It was two alternates? So, let's do this. Let's do... We'll have a full filing, Greg. You sit... John, you're here, listened to it for the first time, let's go forward. That's what we'll do, that's okay. All right.
Sit on it?
Yeah, sit on it. So we'll do it fresh. We'll have John Frank, Jim Corkin, David Assad, Carolyn Marisette, Greg Brilliant, listen to the petition and decide it. And that way, it's a fresh start, that's fine, okay? So Agenda Item Number 01 is Tecumseh Street Realty Trust, 257 Tecumseh Street, Lot I, 2326. It's called the Continuation from the June 20, 2019 Meeting. It's a variance request to construct a single-family dwelling waiving requirements in an A-2 district, lot size 3,700 plus or minus square feet. So for the record, again, will you tell us who you are and what you want to do?
Lisa Nunez. We're looking to waive requirements on the minimum lot area, minimum frontage, minimum front yard, and minimum side yard.
Okay.
For a single family.
My... Will you tell us the history of the lot? My recollection is there was a three-family...
There was a three-family.
And what happened to it?
At Burntown.
Okay. So now you have the lot and you're moving from the three-family to a single-family.
Correct.
And the waivers that you need are front yard waiver...
Correct.
Side yard waivers...
Minimum lot.
Minimum lot size...
Yes.
And the 48-by-26 building envelope, that sufficient for you to put the house on?
Yes.
And you're proposing two off-street parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
And I believe the lot coverage is 35%.
Yes, that's correct as well.
So it's a lot area of 3,700 square feet, frontage of 37 feet...
Yep.
Front yard of 20, side yards of 5, lot coverage of 35%.
Okay, so those are all the variance waivers that you need to do your project.
Yes.
Members of the Board, any questions on this particular petition?
When is the previous structure destroyed?
That, I'm not sure.
Wait a minute. Maybe I have that.
Just about. Couple years?
I think it was a couple years ago.
Let me see if I have it right. Fire, April 16, 2010, at 3:49 PM. Any other questions, members of the Board? John? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Director of Planning, is there anything we should know that you want us to think about before we vote on this?
I don't really have any issues. It's existing lot. There was a three-family, they're proposing a one-family. I would request, if you approve, standard conditions plus the two parking spaces and site plan review.
Two parking, site family review, okay. Motion to grant?
No move.
Okay, motion to grant by Greg. Do I have a second?
With those conditions.
With those conditions. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marisette. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Greg, Carolyn, David? Okay, so that petition is granted with those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Agenda Item Number One, Frank Correa, 129 Hemlock Street, R1358. This is a special permit request to construct a 26-by-34, 884-square-foot detached garage exceeding the maximum allowance of 750 square feet in an S district, lot size 16,529 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, sir. Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
My name is Frank Correa, property owner, and basically I spelled it out, looking to construct a detached garage. E84 square feet exceeds the minimum, maximum 750. Looking for a special permit.
Okay.
Under 86446, that's what I'm trying to get to.
The zoning Board may grant a special permit for the construction of a garage or shed in excess of the maximum size provided. The Board finds that the scale of the proposed structure is consistent with neighboring structures and that the proposed structure will not impact the use and enjoyment of the abutting properties. So that's the standard that we have for this particular special permit. So the garage is going to be used for storage?
Vehicle storage, yeah.
Nothing, no...
No second floor.
Loft area, no living space?
No. You have just one single floor.
What's the height? I didn't see that.
It's going to be 12-foot ceiling, but it's eight foot above the finished grade. It's like set in below grade a little bit, by the way the topography is.
So it's 4'8", 12, yeah. Three-store garage.
Correct. Correct.
The driveway, I think there was something I put on the driveway, the width, where did I get it?
Yeah. Based on the plans, the driveway appears to be 34 feet wide.
Correct.
That is not permissible under...
We don't have the authority to grant that.
Under city ordinance, the driveway can only be 16 feet wide.
Okay.
So, and they can't... This Board cannot waive that. That would take a waiver from City Council. So I can let you know.
So if the Board grants it...
I'd have to get something separate for the driveway, because the driveway is existing. It's been there.
There's an existing driveway, but it looks like you're proposing to extend the driveway.
Yeah, I was looking to... Correct, yeah.
Driveways can only be 16 feet in the City of Fall River.
Okay.
So, and I'm going to be recommending this require site plan review. So at the site plan review stage, you could present a plan that would show a 16-foot driveway.
But once the 16 feet, you could go and open it up?
I could fan it out to the three.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
But the curb cut allegedly can be...
Right.
If you need more than that, you have to go...
And there's no curb there now. It's, like I say, I mean, there's no...
We got it that no curb, but just in terms of the width, if in the event the city does at some point, we're curving it without the wave of 16-foot is what the building ordinance requires or allows you to do it, this Board doesn't have the authority to grant greater one.
Okay.
All right. So any questions, members of the Board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Director, is there anything else that we should think about?
I put them on notice that they can't do a 34-foot driveway. I would request that the Board condition site plan review and if you wanted to, to state in there that no living area allowed.
So, under the special permit, under 86446, the Board, if we think that it's a good idea to grant the special permit, then we have to find that the scale of the proposed structure is consistent with neighboring structures. It looks like everything is in that single-family around there. Some have... I don't see any detached garage shown there, so... But this is a larger lot than most everything else over there. Is consistent with the neighboring structures and that the proposed structure will not impact the use and enjoyment of the abutting properties.
Sir, there's one thing I did want to point out. There is a lot coverage requirement in this zoning district of 25%. It was not noted what the lot coverage is, so anything they do will have to come into the 25% or they'll be back in front of the Board for a variance.
Between the house and the...
Between the house and the... House, the patio, the brick area, the concrete sidewalks, the...
So who did this?
Tarling court.
Brian, maybe Frank.
I don't know if it exceeds the 25%. There's nothing on the plan.
Right, yeah, that I'm not sure 100%. I knew about the 25, but I didn't realize the patio included. I thought it was just structure.
It's maximum lot coverage. That's all impervious area.
Okay.
Sidewalks...
Stuff like that.
Buildings...
Okay.
Patios, you name it.
All right.
Okay, so that's a little risk that you're running when the calculation is done when you come to site plan review. All right, let's see what the Board wants to do. Motion to grant special permit with those conditions?
Motion to grant.
Okay, so we have the finding, so your motion number one is that you find that the scale of the proposed structure is consistent with the neighboring structures and the proposed structure will not impact the use and enjoyment of the abutting properties.
Right.
Okay. Second by Greg. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay. So your petition is granted. You have to go to site plan. The conditions are 16-foot driveway, that's it.
Yep.
Site plan review, no living space above.
Correct. Thank you.
And the 25% lot coverage, but that's... We didn't waive that, so...
Because it wasn't for you.
It just looks like it might be close. Okay. Agenda Item Number Two, Soares Family Revocable Living Trust, 142 Tuttle Street, D1510. Variance request to allow existing apartment unit above garage to remain on parcel, which contains an existing six-unit apartment building in the DL District, lot size 5,035 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a Senior Project Manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city as well as Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the Chairman stated, this petition is with regards to the real estate at 142 Tuttle Street. It's on the east side of Tuttle Street, just north of King Philip, a few houses north of King Philip. The current lot, B15 Lot 10, is 5,035 square feet, contains an existing single-family dwelling, paved, existing six-family, paved, existing paved driveway, and into the rear of the property, there is an existing garage with an apartment above it. So this is an after-the-fact filing and it is also, as you can see, a deck constructed along with that existing garage with an apartment above it as well. What ended up happening is the Soares Family Revocable Trust, you may be somewhat familiar with the family. Mr. Soares owns the Luisa Tano Restaurant, which is just south of the property, and owns a number of the homes in this area. Over the last year or two, they have been in the process of moving a number of properties into a trust, trying to set up his estate as he gets a little bit along in life. And he's here this evening if you have any questions specifically for him. So at the time of the creating of these trusts and the transfer of some real estate and going through some new insurance performance requirements with new insurance providers, specifically when you get more than a three-family unit, you now is considered a commercial structure. So there was a number of things that were taking place. During that insurance inspection, it was brought to their attention that the city did not have on record that there was an apartment above this garage. From what I can get from Mr. Soares, it was built approximately 10 years ago. He had hired a contractor to do it. He himself knew nothing of the variance procedure or things of that nature. Hired a contractor to do it, built the apartment, and it's been sitting there ever since. Now that we have these new trusts being formed and the new insurance providers, he wanted to make sure that everything was considered legally. God forbid if something happened to somebody that was in an apartment above a garage and there was not the appropriate insurance for the property. So that's the petition in a nutshell. The garage itself, that garage unit, has its own parking underneath the garage apartment unit itself in the garage, and there is room for an additional six vehicles to be parked in the existing driveway and paved area. Basically, the entire parcel, other than the structures, is pavement. So they do have the ability to park a number of vehicles on that street. And I do not believe, from what I could see, that there was an issue with parking along Tuttle Street or King Philip. They also own another very large parking area across the street from the restaurant, so parking in that area does not seem to be an issue. If you look around the neighborhood, we're dealing with parcels of similar size, some of them even smaller, mixed uses of anywhere from six families, three families, twos, five. So that's where the neighborhood currently exists. A lot of them don't have off-street parking where we do.
It's been in for about 10 years.
From what I understand. I have no proof of that, because I can't go to the building permit. I went to the building inspector and there's no permit.
Wasn't that legal?
No, apparently not.
Well, that was the curve ball.
He's owned the property for quite a while.
Building permit, I was looking for inspections.
Right.
And the building department doesn't have any of that.
This trust, I only have this paperwork. This trust only owns it as of recently.
No, but it's been in the family.
But going back family, I'm trying to look at the deed, but it goes way back to...
Let me see what date that was.
I don't see what it's...
So Mr. Soares is the one that told you it's approximately 10 years?
Yes.
It's been there?
Yes, correct. And that's really all, I mean, whether it's two years or 10...
This was a recent conveyance into the trust.
2019, that's correct.
Before that, it was from the Soares family into him.
Yes, it's always been...
It's been in the Soares...
About how long, Mr. Soares? When did you first buy this property, do you think?
Over 40 years.
Yeah. I'm saying, when I looked at the title...
So it's been back and forth?
Your mother and father maybe gave it to you or...
I think he gave it to his daughter, maybe, and then it back and forth. Elaine is his daughter.
Also, the six families...
Yeah, no, because when I was looking at the title, it's been in the Soares family. It didn't come... It's been within your family for many years.
That's correct.
But I went to the building inspector trying to find the permit, some inspections...
Right, well, I wish there was. And I spoke with the building inspector on two different fronts. First, I had thought that this could be moved as a special permit. He did recommend that it come through as a variance, so we did. He said, of course, you know, as in past history, if the Board votes and approves it, it will still be subject to all inspections that needs to be done for an occupancy permit. So if that means tearing down walls and checking electric, then so be it. But there would clearly be a hardship, a financial hardship, of having to either remove this entire structure or at least gut it.
Can you explain why we should consider a financial hardship?
One, for the money that was already spent, albeit what he thought was legally constructing it. He hired a contractor that he would have assumed would have pulled out permits and everything else. Apparently, that did not happen. And then, two, the additional cost associated with having to remove it.
So when...
There's nobody living in there right now, right? No, no, again...
Should hardship relate to the soil apart?
No, but it's a unique structure and the hardship, this isn't for financial gain moving forward. He's not asking to subdivide the lot. He's trying not to have a financial loss.
I guess at this stage, it'd be in the hardship business of apartment there.
Correct.
Particularly to the structure itself.
Right.
So, so if the Board is thinking, I haven't asked if anybody's in favor or opposed to it, but the answer is if the Board wants to deny it, then the structure has to be removed or gutted.
Or not used, I guess.
Or not used. But if we grant it, then I think it has to be inspected to get a proper occupancy permit for habitability. That has to be the minimum condition.
With the six family, there is already non-conforming.
Well, that's a whole separate issue about the pre-existing non-conforming of the lot, the six units that are there. But the representation is it's been there for 10 years. We understand that the disclosure that someone built it roughly 10 years ago, how it got there, I don't know, but that, those are all the factors that we need to consider if we're going to grant or deny.
Yeah, so I mean, we'd have coverage, we'd have several issues on...
Yeah, so those are all the things to grant to make this all work. I mean, you've got the pre-existing non-conforming six families.
Yeah, the parcel's non-conforming, the existing structure, the six family's non-conforming.
The whole thing.
Everything is non-conforming, which most of the neighborhood is as well.
Yeah, the setbacks aren't...
Yeah. I don't think you... I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a conforming parcel. Actually, you know what?
No, in what you showed, there's nothing that conforms.
Yeah, maybe B159, there is one single family on 5,000 square feet, but it doesn't meet the building setback. So there are non-conformities on all parcels.
Is there anyone here in favor of anything else, members of the Board? I don't want to put anyone short. Carol, no? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so that's what we've got. Mr. Director, do you have any comments that we should think about before we vote on this?
If you were thinking about granting it, I would recommend a specific condition of getting all, any and all necessary building permits and a condition of no subdivision of this, because a lot of times we're seeing these...
No further subdivision.
No further subdivision, because this clearly doesn't meet the two pre-existing prior to 1954. But somebody will come in and try it.
Well, if it was just the garage with no apartment and we could prove that the garage was built prior to subdivision control, then a sit-go provision would prevail. However, we're telling you that the apartment is...
Is 10 years old.
Is 10 years.
So that's why I would stipulate no further subdivision of this lot.
I make a motion to allow the apartment to remain subject to the conditions as outlined by Mr. Roth, relative to all building permits, applicable building permits be acquired by any occupancy in anything...
And no further subdivision.
And no further subdivision.
So that's Greg's motion to grant with those conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, that was John Frank. John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those...
Do we need to add the fees, because I guess they're to be associated with the driver and...
After the fact, maybe?
Yeah, we've got to pay. If there's an after the fact...
I thought we brought that in. No?
Can we do one?
Unless it's not added to the file.
We have received one for the variance, which is, being an after-the-fact filing, there is a fee of $100 due, that is typically added to the total fee. Please advise. Let me see if this...
I can...
No, wait, wait.
Yeah, I mean, I can go get your check before I leave.
Yeah.
Well, I see your personal check.
I was reimbursed for that.
But if not, that's...
Maybe that's why I'm confusing, because I know I did write the check.
So that will be...
But pass off fail, because it should have been paid.
Yeah, no, just make sure that we've got it.
I amend the motion, including all fees and...
Any subsidies associated with it. So that's Greg's motion, seconded by John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? To agree. Greg?
Carolyn? No.
Assad? Yes. For the one, this petition is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys have a checkbook looking by any chance?
All right, you can do it after.
All right, I have my checkbook in the car.
Would you do Agenda Item Number Three and Number Four?
Agenda Item Number Three, Peter Cabral, 397 Tower Street. The variance requested subdivide lot into two lots, leaving existing single-family in one lot while construction, new single-family in one second lot, requiring R8 district, lot size 10,506 square feet.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering. I'm here this evening on behalf of the property owner, Peter Cabral, who was also here this evening, sitting beside me. So if you had any questions for him specifically, by all means, don't be afraid to ask. Mr. Cabral owns this real estate located at 397 Tower Street, purchased it in March of 2017. This property is located in an R8 district, which is a single-family district with a minimum lot area of 8,000 square feet, 80 feet of frontage, building setbacks of 20 feet in the front, 15 in the sides, and 20 on the rear. As you can see, and if you've been by the property, it's a regular, square-ish-looking lot with 100 feet of frontage, which exceeds the required frontage for the district, comprised of 10,506 square feet, again, larger than what's allowed or required in the district. And the existing dwelling, number 397, as you can see, is pushed to the very far west of this property, leaving approximately 52 feet of open grass area that extends 106 feet back, which is basically underutilized land. So Peter approached me and would like to subdivide the parcel as shown on the plan, creating two different parcels, both in excess of 5,000 square feet, and he would like to be allowed to construct a new single-family dwelling on the new vacant parcel and leave the existing single-family dwelling on the parcel number two. Both parcels would be provided with two off-street parking spaces as well. As you can see, the neighborhood is comprised of a three-family directly to the west, a two-family to the south, another two-family to the south, and then single families heading towards the east. So we have a number of parcels that are non-conforming for one reason or another, but we do have, admittedly, a number of conforming parcels as well. The reasoning behind the variance, again, is that we have the existing dwelling that has ample yard area behind of it, because this lot is 106 feet deep. And again, this is underutilized area that is kind of bisected from the use of the existing single-family dwelling. If you have any specific questions regarding the property itself or the structure, either Peter or myself can answer those questions.
Can you just address the hardship again? It doesn't really...
The, as stated in the initial presentation, the uniqueness of this structure, where it's pushed off entirely to one side, and we have an excess of land area, an excess of frontage, it leaves this large swath in a neighborhood otherwise is made up of single-family homes or multifamily homes almost out to the property line. So really, no one in this area has this expanse of yard area on the side of their home.
Now, this petition was before the board previously, correct?
That's correct.
It was withdrawn without prejudice?
That's correct.
Doesn't seem to be any changes, though?
No, we withdrew it at the time, after speaking with the petitioner, that he had wanted to attempt to speak to any neighbors or answer any questions, or potentially have them feel a little bit more comfortable. I don't know what's taken place between the petitioner and the neighborhood group or the neighbors, so we'll see as public comment unfolds. But he came back to me, I forgot what the date of was that was, but he came back to me, maybe a month or two ago, and said, we would like to try and file the petition again.
Do any members of the board have questions?
Any provisions for parking?
Yes, there'll be two off-street parking spaces for each, as required by zoning.
Any other questions by members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? In favor?
In favor.
We'll start at the back. If you could please stand and state your name and where you live, please. Ma'am in the back.
Joseph Repose, 21st Upper Street, Harvard.
Maria Repose, 21st Upper Street, Harvard.
Why are you in favor of the petition?
I do favor the petition, because Peter Cabral is my nephew, and I'm not sure exactly what the situation is, but, you know, we helped him cleaning up, cleaning up the lot and everything, and it looks nice. It's something that, you know, you must have a chance to have a house, to build a single dwelling home there for one of his relatives, and I think it's just something to dress up the neighborhood and provide some more tactics for the city.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Next.
Jeremiah Susan, I live 146 Lisbon Street.
Could you get that?
No.
Could you please speak up? We can't hear you.
Jeremiah Susan, I live 146 Lisbon Street.
Thank you.
This is my nephew. Haven't seen too much of him lately.
Lupina Susan, 146 Lisbon Street.
These are all directly behind the property, Director Butters.
We're very close, and it's a pleasure to meet the same, my family together.
Thank you. Next row.
I'm John Marks, I live on 124 Clay Street. We're family, but also, we see so many lots in there with that size with a house built. I don't see why not. He can have his lot, 5,000 square feet, his house built sideways like the others do. But I guess it's a lot of people opposed, but we in favor.
Ma'am?
I'm Lucy Marks, 124 Clay Street. I say the same words.
Thank you. Next.
I think it's me. I'm Jose Cabral, I live on 136 Lisbon Street. I'm Peter's father, and the idea to have the lot, the land, I used to live there with very good friends, and always desired to have their lot. So my son bought the house, it was a mess, a lot of rats, a lot of weeds, nobody says nothing now. He did a nice work on the house, cleaned the land, filled it, looks nice. I think it's nice if he can have your permission to build a smaller house, on the future, probably for my daughter. When I get older with my wife, at least I have my family closer to me. I don't think it's a big thing to ask. I appreciate him, your patience, and to have my family together, which is enjoyed my heart. I never stopped no one, no neighbors, to build their houses the way they wanted. So I appreciate your understanding. Thank you.
Next.
My wife will say the same thing.
I'm Maria Cabral, I say the same words my husband says.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Maria Fonso, I'm a close friend, and I'm here to support the...
Can you give us your address, please?
My address, it's a little longer street.
Thank you. Next. Next row then.
Michaela Cray, 136 Lisbon Street, and I believe that it's good to have your family close to me.
Next row.
My name is Manny Lindo, I own the property of Buddy Peters, Musso's cousin.
Whatever, sir.
I'm at 124 Clay Street. I'm in the Tube family with the Marks family. And I'm into real estate. When a customer asks me for a 5,000, for a good-sized lot, I'd look at anything over 5,000 square feet. That's considered a good-sized lot in this city. This is a city, this is not the country. And what the neighborhood has done with their properties, they're all well-kept, they're all respectful people, it's a family unit there. Peter, brother, parents, my aunts and uncles and their kids, all real close by, and this is a, you know, the last piece of land anywhere around there that they could utilize for pastor's daughter and their family to be there one day. I'd love to see that happen. This is a really good situation, there's, these people, they're not causing hardship for the neighborhood, and to deny this would be a shame.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Martin Aitken, and I... Oh, you do? Sorry, I'm taking away the...
My name is Paula Cabral, 192 Lisbon Street. I'm Peter's sister-in-law, my property of Butts, his, in the time, in his backyard. And I guess the underlying statement here tonight is we all believe in the causes, with a lot of heart and soul that's gone into it, initially purchasing the property, and now hoping to be able to build another structure there to keep the family unit.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madeline Cabral, I live on 132 Lisbon Street, and that's my uncle Peter. And I feel like it would be a really nice spot to just have like a nice little house, but family really close, because it's always gonna make a difference to you. And I don't really see like any problems that it might be creating mostly, and...
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Aitken, I live at 136 Lisbon Street, and Peter is my brother. And I think it's something very ideal, and I've lived on Lisbon Street my whole life, and to stay close to the family would be perfect, so I, that's why I'm here to support him and that this would go through for a single-family home.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dirk Aitken, I live on 136 Lisbon Street. Peter is my brother-in-law. And all this started when my father-in-law, Peter Cabral, had a dream to buy the lot with the house, and subdivide one day, so then Peter could have the house, and me and my wife, we never purchased a house, still live on rental, so then we could have the lot for our favor, and we'd one day build a house over there, stay together.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in favor? Sir?
My name is Steve Cabral, I'm Peter's brother.
Could you give us your address, please?
132 Lisbon Street, property of Butts, the back half of Peter's property. You may not see it as 132.
Yeah.
It's actually 132, 136, and it may even be noted as 156, which was the original property number on record. So, again, I'm here in favor to support my brother's petition here for the variance. The ideal situation is to have that as a buildable lot for my sister, so she can be there with those people all together. I do know there's some people who are against it, and mainly, one of our neighbors specifically, who is also trying to gather up some information, petition on that. I feel that the lot that he's asking to have divided there conforms to all the properties that are there, so shouldn't be an issue. There's 122 single families in that area, and when I say that area, I mean Orswell Street, Tower Street, Lisbon Street, Clay Street, America Street, Emberg Street, and out of those 122 single families, there's only 48 that would comply to an R8 zone. So we're talking about two-thirds of the homes are, do not comply to the zoning that is there in that area. And out of those 74 that don't comply, 45 of those properties are under 5,500 square feet. So I don't see the issue with that. I do have sample properties in the area of homes that were built more recently, if you'd like for me to show you, which you'll see they'll have less frontage than what's required. Some of the properties, 50 feet, there's even a property in Maplewood area that's 39 feet of frontage, and well under 5,000 square feet. As you notice, most of the properties, there's been a, some of the information that's going on about this property and about the variance, we've actually talked to all the neighbors that we could on those specific streets, because I feel that this should be something that has to do with that specific neighborhood, not someone in the Maplewood area that's down on Brayton Avenue or Stevens Street or that far off. These are, if we're gonna talk to the people, it's the people that are actually living in that area, where it would be an issue. So, like I, the numbers I gave you, like I said, so we're 122, we have 86 signatures of actual homeowners, not somebody who's just walking down the street, or not somebody who's going to Market Basket, or going to the association meeting, people who actually live on these streets and that are homeowners, not renters, and they're all in agreement. And the people that we did speak to, who were told a little bit of a different story in regards to signing the petition against this, maybe they were misinformed or coerced in some way, but I know some of the issues that were told to them was that this area has a high water table, and the, you're butted to the east of us, which is Mr. Duarte, says that he would have a problem with that if something was built, the water table would be too high. I'm not sure that would be proper, because this is our property behind him, as you can tell, his property is elevated about six feet higher than ours. We're not having an issue with the water table, so I don't see why it would be an issue with his. Again, that's one of the things that we've been hearing from our neighbors, who are kind of, you know, manipulated or coerced into signing a petition of some sort. Mr. Duarte also said that he would be worried, because, you know, if there's a house there and it caught fire, then his house could catch fire. Well, what if his house caught fire and it did the reverse reaction to our property, or to my brother's property? Because he went for a variance, and he built an oversized garage attached to his house of 29 by 32, bigger than most of the homes in the area, and it's only two feet away from the property. So these are some things that we need to take into consideration. Instead of worrying about other people just trying to better the neighborhood, they should worry about nuisance properties, like this one that's on the corner of Clay and America. Overgrown, rodents, trash, that's what the Maplewood Association should be looking for, those types of things. And my brother, before he purchased this property, it was a nuisance property. Stray cats, rodents, pigeon coops, grass three to four feet high, it was an eyesore for that neighborhood. So anybody who really lives there and knows the area, and knows us, and knows who we are, would be glad to say, yes, I believe they should have an opportunity to have a variance for this property. So, again, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time and listening to my long, long talk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here in favor of this petition? Sir in the back?
Hi, everybody. Hi, my name is Peter Hernandez, I live at 362nd Street, I work at Highland State, and I don't live there, but I consider them, my family, going to Clay Street, going to Lisbon Street, it's like my second home. The properties are in absolute immaculate condition. They have barbecues, they have cookouts, and to see them all together, it's just such an amazing thing, like many families here in Baltimore are like that. And I don't know, building in that lot, I mean, I don't see 5,000 square feet being too small, you know, they've been selling real estate for twelve years now, and lots all over the city, like second what me and Lino said, we're actually partners, and I've seen properties 4,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, they have properties, buildings built right on them. And it'd be a shame to not let this go through, I mean, that's what I stand for. I mean, they're great people, they support the community, it'd be an additional stream of revenue for the city in taxes, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else here in favor, sir?
My name is Paul Lynn, I live on 593 Montauk Street. Peter is my nephew, and all the support, again, as the family, being together. I lived earlier, I lived on 12 Lisbon Street, so I'm familiar with the area, and that would be a great opportunity for them to have that lot subdivided.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here in favor? Is there anybody here opposed to this petition? We'll start at the corner on the right. Ma'am, if you could stand and...
Can I raise a question, please?
Well, we're gonna hear from people who are opposed, sir.
I'm looking for clarification.
Well, when we get to you, sir, you can ask that, but I'm gonna start in this corner of the room, if you could please state your name, where you live, and why you're opposed to the petition.
Robin Sheen, 350 Rock Street, and I don't live next to that street.
We didn't, our recording secretary did not hear you.
Robin Sheen, 350 Rock Street, thanks to everyone, I live in the Maplewood area for years now, that I feel like the 8,000 square feet has been broken. I've lived in that neighborhood for years, and it's just getting more and more cramped. I mean, emotionally, I mean, these people love their families, so of course they want this to happen, but, I mean, you have to look at it, zoning laws were put in place for a reason, so neighborhoods wouldn't get over crowded. 8,000 square feet is not a lot of property. 5,000 square feet is a lot smaller than 8,000 square feet. It's just getting very, very cramped. I mean, I live next door, they broke up a property next to it. The man next door, there are four people living there, there are 11 vehicles living there, two of them are tractor-trailer trucks, without the trailer, of course. And, I mean, I sleep here, the guy's got his tractor-trailer truck there, he wakes me up every morning, and there's nothing I can do about it. So the neighborhood's getting cramped, I think we should stick with the zoning laws they were put in place for some reason. The amount of houses, the other man mentioned that were on smaller lots, what year were they built? Were they built before the zoning laws went into place? Like, who knows? He didn't give that information. But, I mean, please, please, drive through the Maplewood area, it's getting very cramped, people are speeding up and down the streets, and it used to be very quiet in that neighborhood, it's not. So, again, it's not, the street does not, is not next to me, but it just creeps out, okay, it happened in this neighborhood, they broke the zoning law, and they were approved, and it just keeps going up on and on, you know? The neighborhood's just getting really cramped. And as far as that, people will say, oh, the tax money is good for the season, for the city. Like, if I drove down the street, Stafford Road, and I saw improvements being made, or whatever, I don't see it. So, like, where is this tax money going? It's not helping anything, you know? So it's not here to find the neighborhood.
Next.
My name is Dolores Mello, I live at 156 Powell Street, and I kind of live close to her, and I agree with every, everything she said. I've been there for 80 years, and I've definitely seen a big change, and we've fought plenty of times over variances. I don't know why they have variances, to me, it's like breaking the law. If you have a rule, why don't we follow those rules? It just don't make no sense, and it just gets cramped more and more. You only knew those sections around there, how it was so nice years ago, everybody had gardens in their yard and everything, it's all gone. But I agree with her 100%, she took the words out of my mouth.
Next. Is there anybody else here opposed to this petition?
I'm Robert Silver, 226 Archer Street. My concerns are a little bit broader because I see the properties all over town being subdivided for financial gain. This is one of my concerns. Being subdivided and built on and rented.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Dolores Silver. I live at 226 Archer Street. And variances are broken or allowed over and over and over again. And we have rules, you have laws. This is the law that you people are supposed to abide by. And yet you keep giving variances, giving variances, and it just makes things a whole lot worse in the city. That's it.
Next.
My name is Cecile Couture. And I live at 424 Tower Street. I am across the street from the firemen over here. Their house, that lot is a postage stamp lot, I'm sorry to say. There's a lot of water problems in that area. In fact, I had a water problem a couple of years ago when I got 28 inches of water in my basement. And this is across the street from me. But regardless, I also had my property, a lot that's on my property, well, part of my property, here at City Hall to get a variance for my children. I was denied. And that lot is bigger than the lot that they have right there that they're trying to get a lot on. The people that signed the petitions that I saw on her list are people from the area of Tower Street, not relatives. I don't see anybody from Tower Street that signed any of their papers. I am totally against it. That water table is terrible. I've been there 54 years. The houses around me weren't even there. I mean, half of these houses that were built are my friends' rented. Their houses are of good size and the lots are okay. But the neighborhood is getting so crowded, the parking is terrible. Do you know that the people that they're talking about here are parking on Tower Street? Because there's no parking on Lisbon and there's no parking on a lot of the places. I am totally against it, 100%.
Next.
My name is Paula Martin-Bill. I'm from 197 Rainey Street. I spend 90% of my free time at my sister's house on Tower Street. And I realize and I feel bad for the family, they want to keep it together. But to the point where they're crowding the neighborhood and you've listened to maybe 95% of family. Now is the time to listen to the people that it's going to greatly affect is the people that live around them. And they have lives too, they have families, and they have built up and kept their property thing. And before, yes, they bought that, it was a garage, turned into a house. And you had to abide by what the person that lived in that garage house had on a side or whatever. You could not control what he did, it was his property. You could complain and get nowhere. But this is getting kind of ridiculous. She can't have a variance to put a family with hardship and yet they have less land and they're going to build right up on top of the next door's house and the garage house that's currently there. I feel bad for them, but something has to give. This is just going too far out. Thank you.
Next.
My name is Richard Souza. I live at 266 Kennedy Street. And on behalf of the Maplewood Association, we are objecting to this completely. Two or three reasons. Number one, the amount of space that is required to put this house up will leave you a very tight coordinates between the two existing buildings that's there now. That is a garage, a three-car garage that was converted to a house. I didn't have a chance to check on the building permits when it was done and if it was done legally. The Association is against all, any expanding of lots like this because it just want to congest everything there. The other thing that I looked into is the fact that in the event, God forbid if there was a fire and the house, the house is stating that it's a single-family house that I didn't know, we don't know if it's one floor or two floors. Is there parking for off-street parking? Is that kind of going to be considered a garage underneath? In the event, because of the overhang on the existing reconverted garage to a house, there's an 18-inch overhang, I believe, that is going to protrude into the eight, eight feet or 10 feet that is required, that is assumed to be for the space between the two houses. That's not enough for a fireman to put a ladder on the house to get there because they need so many feet coming out at the base to go up. And if they had to rescue anybody on a second floor, if there was going to be a second floor, I don't know. But the entire Maplewood Association is against all expenditures like this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name is Julie Jasmine. I live on 208 Frost. And I also oppose this. I've had experiences in my own neighborhood, right directly across the street from me for years. I've lived where I am for 50 years and actually had to buy a piece of property across the street from me because every time it changed hands, they wanted to either put a house there or a business there. And it's an R8 neighborhood. Finally, we had the opportunity, my husband and myself, to buy this piece of property and we bought it. I still own it today. God forbid if I, if something happened to me, whoever would end up with it would probably try to put a house in there. And it's a lot bigger than what this parcel is. But I wanted to preserve the neighborhood. I like the neighborhood, that's why I bought there and built there and raised my family there. And that's like 50 years ago.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Sivigni. I live at 250 Kennedy Street, Forever. I'm opposed to it first thing. It doesn't meet the zoning. There is, I don't feel there's any hardship going on here other than the family. I feel sorry that, but I feel that the distance between that structure they're planning and the next people who are living there on the left-hand side would be tremendous hardship to them. I'm also the Vice President of Maplewood Association. We had a meeting last night and we totally oppose this. We're trying to, that's why we inform the Maplewood Association to try to help conform our neighborhood to keep the zoning proper, not to have everybody coming in and trying to tear our neighborhood apart with small lots. So I hope you can concede that we really need help to try to conform to what you passed many years ago, the regulations of R8 zoning. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Ms. Chen, can I just ask one question before you move on from that area? The young lady in the second row, right there. You went for a variance, where do you live?
424 Tower Street. I have a lot on the side of my house.
Right outside. Yeah, I see that. You own both sides of your house, these lots over here? I just wondered.
It's all one property again. Because we couldn't get the variance and we tried again. But my children turned around and said that they wouldn't be able to afford it, so we stopped them.
Move over to the middle. Is there anybody else opposed to this petition? Ari, ma'am in the right, we'll start with you and go down.
No, I'm here for support only.
Okay.
My name is Paul Gerard from 13 Kyle Jacob Road in Westport. And the Director Butters, Mr. and Mrs. Duarte are my in-laws. And I have to express my concerns that we visit quite often, as you might imagine. And fairly often when we're there visiting, there's a great deal of difficulty backing out of their driveway onto the street due to the overcrowding of all the vehicles that are there. There've been a number of accidents at that corner, right there at that particular property. And there's a high number of elderly people who live right there in that vicinity. It's going to be extremely difficult for them to be able to back out onto Tower Street in order to get out and about. So again, as a fairly frequent visitor, my concern is to be able to get them out of that property safely.
Which Director Butter are you talking about? Are you talking about 387 or 419?
419.
419, yes. Thank you.
So again, it's already overcrowded with vehicles. Adding more vehicles, more housing, more traffic is just going to make it a worse situation and potentially cause problems with traffic.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brenda Gerard, 13 Kyle Jacob Road.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Could you keep your voice up?
Brenda Gerard, 13 Kyle Jacob Road, Westport. It's my parents' house, 419 Tower Street. It's too crowded there. The house is going to be too close, it'll be a fire hazard. People are talking about water tables. The houses behind that they live, I don't know how far back you remember, but I used to ice skate back there. There was a pond, a big pond. All the kids were too young to look up. I used to ice skate there. Where did all that water go? It was huge. It really shouldn't, you shouldn't approve this. Go take a look for yourself. Don't listen to all these stories. Go look for yourself and see what it is up there.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Eugene Duarte, I'm the Director Butter, the media Butter.
What's the address, sir?
419 Tower Street. I'm concerned about the area, the lot size that is proposed is too small. And it could be approaching onto my area if that's supposed to be granted. They claim they got more footage than I have in my property. But I got 10,000 plus square feet in one property. Their property is large in a sense that's combined. But if you split it, it's non-conforming. I'm aware of the hazardous when buildings close together for fire hazard and parking. There's three decades on corners. Each family today has more than one vehicle. There's two vehicles per family on an average. And if parked, we have trouble backing out of our driveway. They're going to be cutting curb in if this is proposed, you know, off-street parking. But how much can they take away? Once you take away the curb, that's it, there's no more parking in that area. So that's one of the concerns I have. The other concern I have is the water table there. Because like my daughter had stated, we built that house years ago in the early 70s. And there was no houses behind us. There was a brook there. And that brook, it was there all the time. You could go ice skating in the water, in the summertime, it would melt it down and the ducks and everything used to be in there for a while. But after, when that was, that land was sold, that was all filled in with bricks and everything. There used to be weeping willow trees back there to absorb all that water. When they, when they built the houses back there, we cut the trees down and changed the water table there and we got flooded, we were getting flooded. So now, without no trees, where's the water going to go? I had a tree in my backyard that cried. It was over 80 feet tall because it was constantly getting drink, water from that area. And Mr. Cabral, when he, when he built that house there, he had a problem. He had a problem. He had to put a wooden plank out from the street to the house because the water was all around there. And one day he came and he approached me and he said something about moles in his house. Because he has no cellar there because he knew from the fact that it was wet. But he built on a slab, which is okay. But you know, you get mold in there, it's no good for your health. But anyways, that's the story.
Thank you, sir. Next.
I'm Jalala Stewart, 419 Tower Street. And like he said about the water table back there, we got flooded when they built those houses. When I grew up there, living in that neighborhood, the family for three generations, that's wetlands. As far as I know, you're not even supposed to build on wetlands. Sucker Brook Fender is right behind our house, always has been. We stayed there in the winter time for years and years. I don't know how they got permitted to build on wetlands. Because you look it up and it'll show you where Sucker Brook is, right behind Moore. I don't need to be flooded again. Every time they build a house, we would get flooded. I've got a finished basement down there with a lot of expense. And my heating system is in the basement. If it gets flooded and puts out the pilot light to the heating system, because of flooding, all my pipes are going to freeze in winter time. And now I've got a big expense tearing out the walls, putting new pipes in down there. That never happened before, they started building houses so close to me. And yes, my husband's a retired firefighter, he's been through plenty of fires. And when houses are too close, they burn from combustion, whatever you call it. Spontaneous combustion. We lost a whole city block when our day in bed dropped across the street, not near. This is near me, I'm immediate of a but, across the street, we lost five to six, three family houses, just like that, from combustion. I don't want my house to burn, I don't want my house to flood. They say they've got 5,500 square feet. No, they haven't. They've got less than 5,000 square feet. A frontage is supposed to be 80 feet, they've got 47 feet. The side boundaries are supposed to be 15 feet apart between the houses. If they built that house, they're only going to be 10 feet apart. It's not enough room. Neighborhood overcrowding and I object to it.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Oh, and I meant saying the parking too, it's horrendous. Now, because of two retirement houses, that's 12 cars. And if you drive by there, you see how short a distance from this corner to my house. And I have the problem with cars to the right, to the left, and behind me. By the time I pull out where I can see because of those vehicles, and some of them are big pickup trucks. I'm in the middle of the road and I can't tell you how many times I almost got hit in the rear end of my car because I couldn't see them. How do you get out there when there's vehicles obstructing your view? It's going to be worse with another house there cutting curb in for off-street parking.
Anything else, ma'am?
I think that's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Probably more, but I can't think of it right now.
Sir?
My name is Joe Fingles. I've had the privilege.
Your address, sir?
156 Emma. I've had the privilege of appearing before this board over a number of years. What we need to be looking at here is zoning. That's the purpose of the whole thing. Zoning was put in place to provide open space for all citizens. That's the purpose of zoning. In the last filing that was withdrawn before the board in 18, the map that was withdrawn and the filing were withdrawn by Mr. Agia with the understanding that he gave the board that they would make a different filing when they came back. And that is the reason the board, rightly so, granted them that relief when they issued their order and said, okay, we'll do it without prejudice. When they have come back this time of the filing, the map is the identical map dated 18, which I received from planning. The letter accompanying it is word for word, no adjustments, it's really a copy. That is the so-called new filing. And I'd be happy, on the basis of what we're discussing, to review why, under the rules and regulations, it just doesn't fit, doesn't apply. And if you had enough to review the land, there is no way they could take that land and cut it and say, okay, we'll fit it differently. I'm starting, what's going to happen? It can't happen. And I'll look at the filing. The only difference in the filing letter was the date in the corner. They list the type of hardship. The existing parcel is oversized for the district. I assure you, I can make a statement that is not going to be refuted here, Stephen. I've lived in Maymore longer than anybody here. So if you want to say the hardship is because it's oversized, I guess I'd be one of those that would be brought in immediately. My property on Emmett Street is 20,000 square feet. That's oversized. The fact of the matter is, under the regulations, the minimum, minimum, and it spells it out, required is 8,000 square feet. It doesn't say anything beyond that is oversized. And that's the reason we have zoning. So it'd be open land for everybody. You can go anywhere in the city and point to areas and say, see, there's a 50-foot lot, 60-foot lot. That's Fall River. The only way you can get away from that is via zoning. That's the whole purpose of zoning. And I'm willing to, I find it very difficult to believe that after the treatment they got from the board, they came back with exactly the same filing. It makes no sense. The board has to look at it on the basis of the rules, and the rules are very explicit. It's a question of taking the land that's there now, if, no matter how you divide it, you take a lot. Today, it doesn't really conform fully. It comes close. But you would take a lot that, let's assume it's conforming, and divide it into two non-conforming lots. Where does that come under zoning? That makes no sense. But the whole purpose of zoning is to have open land and to say there are other houses in the neighborhood. Yeah, sure. I grew up maybe 100 feet from where I live now, on a house of 50 feet. They're all over the city. It's an old mill town. The way to get around that and change the city is via zoning. That's the whole purpose of zoning. I, I'm willing to, if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here opposed to this petition? Ma'am?
I would just...
Are you?
I would just, if you have. Describe the neighborhood. Existing neighborhood contains lots of similar and smaller size? Sure. Say that about any neighborhood. But that's not a criteria for this board to break the lot up into a lot that has a frontage that ends up 50-foot frontage. It just doesn't make any sense.
Anything further, sir?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ma'am?
My name is Cheryl Quinto. I live at 25 Clay Street, which, I own the property at Clay Street. I've been there for 20 years. I'm here mainly in support of the Duatts because I know them, they're neighbors, and in my opinion, I'd first like to add that I was not coerced or lied to by anyone. I wasn't even asked by the other people. I don't have anything against anybody in my neighborhood. My main issue is if that were my property, I know what the lot size is, I couldn't give you dimensions or anything like that. If I owned the Duatts property, I would not want it because, number one, it's, it doesn't, whatever the measurement, exact measurements are, I couldn't tell you. I can just say that if you go there and look at it, you would see how close it would be to their property, and they would have no privacy. Absolutely, that's the main reason. If it was my house, I wouldn't want it because of the privacy and the fire hazard. And that's it. Thank you.
Ma'am?
I'm Bethany Duatt. I live on 26 Residence Street, same street as a lot of relatives. I have nothing against the family at all. I've lived in the neighborhood my entire life. I'm concerned about the congestion. I'm concerned about the fire hazard, and to say that there is no water table, I'm sorry, but there is. I know of a lot of neighbors that have flooding in their basement when I go to the convenience. Maybe it doesn't happen to you guys, but it happens because they've been slammed. These have stolen. But those are all my reasons. Everybody here has very valid reasons, and I can tell you for a fact that no one was going misleading anybody when it comes to signing any kind of paperwork. And again, I have nothing, I grew up, so I have nothing against them. It's not that, it's just, those are my reasons.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here opposed? Would you have two letters in opposition? I'll read those into the record. The first one is from Leo Palatieri, State Councilor. I'm writing this letter in opposition to item number three in the July 18, 2019 zoning Board of Appeals agenda. Peter Cabral's requesting a variance to subdivide the existing parcel at 392 Tower Street into two lots. Request would leave the existing single-family pond in one lot while constructing a new single-family on the second lot with the requirements in the RE district. I've been contacted by many neighbors who have concerns about the waiving of the dimensional requirements. I'm opposed to the construction of another single-family home in this already congested area. I believe this would have a negative impact on the neighborhood, especially when there is no hardship involved with this request. Please consider denying this request and read this letter into the record of your July 18, 2019 meeting. Thank you for your consideration. The second letter is from Eugene Delora Stewart, who I have spoken. I will just read this into the record. Ladies and gentlemen, please be advised that I am the immediate abutter to the proposed parcel two shown on the variance site plan for 397 Tower Street, petition to subdivide the existing parcel into two lots and to erect a single family on a less than 5,000 square foot lot. This construction would not be consistent with the neighborhood. The surrounding lots are mostly 100 feet of frontage with 10,000 square feet of area. The parcels identified as E634 and E633 on the subdivision plan are shown as two separate lots, when in fact, they are actually owned by the same owner and utilized as one house lot. The taxes are assessed at one 8,500 square foot lot, not two 4250 square foot lots. I am concerned about waiving the sideline requirements to 10 feet because of fire hazard. I am also concerned about runoff and flooding. In addition, I am concerned about parking and exiting my driveway, which the neighborhood is already congested with parking, and if autos park too close to the edge of my driveway, it is difficult to see around them to exit. The plan does not provide for any off-street parking. It is my understanding that minimum frontage is 80 feet and minimum area is 5,500 square feet. Minimum sidelines are 15 feet. This proposed law is asking not only to waive one requirement, but all three. This is detrimental to the neighborhood. I respectfully request that you deny this petition and detach. There are 68 signatures in opposition as well. Are any of those, all the letters that have been submitted in opposition? Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions after hearing the comments?
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to a couple of the items?
Yes, Stephen.
I'll be super brief. First of all, what people don't generally understand, and this isn't just for you, but maybe for the audience, the purpose of the zoning Board of Appeals is, gives a property owner the ability to come in and present the petition to not meet the requirements. Everyone stands up, you should abide by zoning, end of story. Well, then if that's the case, there's no need for a zoning Board of Appeals. So that's, that's the process.
Could you raise your voice? They couldn't hear you.
I can try and raise it a little bit more. The purpose of the zoning Board of Appeals is to give people the ability to come in with a petition that does not meet the requirements. If everyone met the zoning requirements for building setbacks and all of those things, there would be no purpose for the zoning Board of Appeals. So that's the process that we go through. Second of all, the petition that we requested to withdraw at the previous meeting, what we had stated was we were going to give the petitioner the ability to discuss the property with the neighbors and potentially come back with an additional, a different plan. We're not required to come back with a separate plan or anything different. So that's what we've got.
I see that.
Please, through the chair.
Please, everybody's had a chance to comment. Mr. Aguirre has an opportunity.
Continuing on, the two most affected abutters, or two of the most affected abutters, 419 the Duatts, were granted a variance to build a larger structure closer to the property line. At that time, there was no concern for congestion. There was no concern for being too close to a property line if a fire ever occurred. And that, and that building addition is almost entirely on top of the property line. Across the street, as the, as the property owner stated, she took full opportunity and to come before the zoning Board of Appeals and attempt her own variance. It was denied or withdrawn, I believe is what she said, but she was glad that the zoning Board of Appeals existed and there's the ability for a landowner to come in and attempt to get a variance, which she tried to do. It was okay then, and it was a good idea then, but now it's not. With regards to the water table and things of that nature, land development, you cut trees, groundwater elevations change, the site plan review committee looks at those kinds of things for actual construction and makes sure that the construction is done correctly. So that's, of course, something that, that could take place beyond that. With regards to off-street parking, if you read the narrative in the corner of our plan, it does say that off-street parking would be provided for both parcels, as I stated in our initial presentation as well. So I just wanted to respond to a few of those items, which seem to be the larger items of concern before the board had another discussion or vote one way or the other.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion from members of the board? Any questions from members of the board? Is there a motion to grant or deny?
Can I make a response to this comment?
We've already heard from the public comments in favor and in opposition.
I need to address what he said about my parcel land that was a non-buildable lot then.
Ma'am, it's already been closed down. We've already put along the board to...
But then I can use...
Before we see Director of Planning, do you have any comments on the petition?
No, I don't. If, obviously, if you do decide to grant it, I would request that you require site plan review of the parking spaces and the standard, standard things for that. But I don't have any other things. You know, it is the identical plan that was withdrawn, but you've seen that within the file.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from a member of the board?
Madam Chairman, I move that it should be denied based on the fact of inadequate display of the hardship.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you for your time.
All right, agenda item number four, Franklin Service Auto Care LLC, 1101 North Main Street. Variants request to demolish the existing auto-worming canopy and auto-repair structures and construct new canopy in 2080 square feet convenience store, no auto repairs. We are in A2 district.
Can we just take it outside, please?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Hal Truber. I'm a consulting engineer with offices at 112 State Road in Davin, Massachusetts, and I'm here representing the applicant on this application. As you've stated, this is a variance application, the application to waive the setback requirements in the A2 apartment.
Excuse me, people in the back. Please leave.
Ma'am, you need to go out.
We're going.
We can, we can hear it. We can't hear the applicant.
So the, these, yeah, I'll wait a minute.
demolish the whole structure?
Yep.
Second down the lower?
Yes, sir. So the subject property is located at 1101 North Main Street at the intersection of North Main and President Avenue. The site, the site measures approximately 13,000 square feet and located in the A2 apartment district. It's bound to the north and east by the Morton Middle School, to the south by President Avenue, and to the west by North Main Street. Access to the site is via two existing driveways of North Main and one off of President Avenue. The property had been used as a gasoline filling station with car repairs since the early 60s, but it's currently closed. I believe the applicant came in front of this board back in March to, because of the use, I guess it was closed for two years, and it was a grandfather, they lost the use on the, the non-conforming use for the gasoline filling station and the auto repair. This board granted, gave the applicant the permission to reuse the property for a gasoline filling station with car repairs and a convenience store.
No more, you're just going to do the convenience store?
But that was based on the existing structure and the canopy that is there. Since then, the applicant, they hired me to look at the site. I looked at the site, you're all familiar probably with gas stations. Now, gas stations are different than what they used to be in the 60s. You know, the structure is about 60 years old. It's a single, it's a block building with, with the flat roof. The two pumps are so close to the, to the, to the building, there's nearly no room to maneuver around the pumps. There's no way, there's no place for parking. So when I looked at this and we discussed the options, you know, renovating the store, what we wanted, he wanted to do, I, and this is basically, I do, I'm an expert in gas station designs, I've done over 200 gas stations through New England. So I, I suggested that tearing the building down and pushing it more and easier way to the back of the site would open up the whole site. Then we can provide parking for safe circulation around the pumps, and he wanted to extend the canopy. So basically, we have two structures. We have a canopy that is 770 square feet, that's, it's non-conforming. You have this on the existing site plan, and it's non-conforming as far as the front setback. We do have a 2,130 square foot building that is located to the rear of the property that's also non-conforming in, in terms of setback. There's hardly, there's some parking, but there's, it's not really well delineated. The maneuver around this, the site is not that safe, and so, and this is what the building looks like. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. So with the proposal, my, my client would like to raise both the, the canopy and the building. Construct a 2,080 square foot building, approximately the same size of the existing building on the site, but push, as I stated, push the building back closer to the property line, to the east. This way, we can provide eight parking spaces in the front, we can provide plenty of maneuver 20, 24 feet around the pumps. It's much safer traffic circulation, delineated parking spaces. It will be a state-of-the-art structure that meets all current building codes. I do have a rendering of what the building would look like, you know, it's...
Could you show that to the...
Sure. Sure. I'm sorry.
Is it, is it privately owned company or is it gonna be a...
No, it's a privately owned company. So it's not a Mobius, so the, yeah, my client is here. He's out of the country. His son is here. I believe his son will be running the convenience store. They own a few gas stations, and this is their business. They own a gas station in, in Bedford, one in Fairhaven, and then one in Metford, yes, so. So we're here for, for, for the, to ask for relief on the setbacks. And this is, the structure would, would look something similar to this. It's, it's a curb cut design with, with an A-frame, architectural shingle, roof, siding, and, and...
Anything over there that's gonna help.
I agree, I agree.
Is gonna help, period.
But mainly, I, I know, I mean, really, the, the side circulation and also when we get to the, I did submit a, a support memo with this to support the, and if you're familiar with the site, you probably know what the, uh, the grades there at the intersection. So it's really hard to maintain a safe access and egress to that site without lowering the grade. So what we wanted to do, without, with having, keeping this, the same existing building there, it would be really hard to do that. So pushing the building back and lowering the grade a couple of feet, we can have a safer access to the property. Again, this is, this is some samples that what the property would look like for similar projects, you know, with, with the pumps in the front.
You gotta drive through it? Is that a drive-through for coffee?
No, sir, those are just...
No, no, there's no drive-through. Those are similar, no. This is, this is the, this is similar projects. No, we're not here for a drive-through.
I wasn't sure, because I wanted to push it back. Is this how you...
No, no, there's no drive-through. There's no, this is only...
Just to be clear, the prior variance that was granted allowed for auto repair, but we're not seeking that.
We're not seeking, so it was just to reestablish the use.
The prior variance was to just legitimize the, uh, the use of the gas station, the little small retailer and the...
I guess my question is if a new variance is granted tonight, how is that affect the old one?
Uh, whichever variance is acted upon by the, by pulling the building permit.
I think he was trying to sell the building to, to a person that was gonna do repairs before. You guys are gonna buy it now.
But it's, are the same people that bought it, but they won't be doing a repair on that location. That's, they won't be doing it.
John came, but John had, had, the former owner had ceased doing business for two years. So he, I heard he was trying to sell it to somebody who did the same type of business. That's why he came in for a variance. That's not you guys.
I don't believe so, sir. I think we were gonna make a new store. We start.
Yeah, yeah.
Any members of the board have questions? Give it your favor.
We're looking at eight, eight pumps, eight stations, four pumps.
Four pumps, eight fueling positions, correct, yes.
Canopy covering the entire?
Correct, yes.
And access is North Main and President Avenue?
The access, again, I'm sure probably the, we're, right now, we're showing the existing curb cuts to remain, but again, I'm, I'm not saying it. I, I know. I'm looking at you, and I know I can read your mind, so. But, but here, we're here for, I mean, zoning. We're here for the setback, uh, to relieve for the, for the setbacks from all, from the front sides and the rear. It's all stated in the table what we need for setbacks. But as far as the use, I would say this is a less intense use than what you approved back in March, if we eliminate the, the repair, the oil repair.
Is, no, nobody else here in favor? Nobody opposed? Mr. Rock, any?
Yeah, I have some issues. Well, first of all, let me preface. I think that the redoing this to a more modern style, I'm actually in favor of compared to what is out there. I, I do disagree that, I believe that building a 2,080 square foot traditional retail gas station, convenience farm, you know, with all of that is a much higher trip generation than the repair. It is. So it is a more intensive use, in my opinion. I don't have an issue with that. What I do have an issue with is I feel that the site that you're proposing is way overbuilt. I would recommend the removal of one of the four gas pumps, the gas pump that is closest to the north. It only provides 12.7 feet around, and that is actually right where the backing up of the handicap space is. If you look where that pump is, it's coming, your 34-foot access drive, you're running right into the pump. You'd have to, you could literally only make a one-way around. They can't back, back out. If you remove that pump, you allow for the full site circulation. That's the first. Second, the 24-foot curb cut that is closest to the entrance should be required to be removed. The 69-foot curb cut to, on President Avenue should be cut down to approximately half. There's no need for the curb cut. As you can drive straight into where someone in the pump is, it should be aligned up more with the access drive that they're proposing. So in general, uh, the redevelopment, I'm actually fine with. The increased trip generation, I don't see that much of an issue. I do think that by not, you know, granting, uh, the waiver would be reducing it to the three pumps, getting rid of the 24-foot curb cut, and reducing the 69-foot curb cut to align with the, uh, the driveway. And I think that those requirements would make it a much more efficient and safer site circulation. So, uh, because they're essentially doubling the intensity of use of pumps and they, the trip generation from, that they're doubling, that they're increasing on the retail is a lot. So therefore, to mitigate that, I think that that would be the best solution, in my opinion.
Does each one of those pumps, the four islands, are those four station pumps, or I mean, four car pumps? Or is there one on each side?
Yes, one on each side, right. Yes, correct.
Okay, so they're not doubles?
No.
No.
How about, how about signage and lighting? Can we talk to anything about that?
Signage and lighting, lighting can be done through site plan review. And signage is very prescriptive through the building issuings of the building commissioner. It would have to meet whatever requirements are. But you are, they are seeking a variance for the setback for the canopy. And I think that the setback should be, of that canopy should be reduced by the removal of that one island to the north and the intensity of, you know, use to remove the 24-foot curb cut and to shrink down the 69-foot curb cut to align with their access drive.
Now, that changed the plan. Do they, that's something that we have to... They have to read or modify their, their application?
You could, could, you could approve to condition it, or they could, they may wanna come back with a definitive plan so, so you know the curb cut lengths and those sorts of things.
May I? Since we have to go through site plan review, I would assume, or even with the, or if we make the, the changes, are we going back for, because those issues could be addressed with the site plan review. But if, if you think we're not, we just, if I make the changes on this plan, then we can come back to the zoning board, and the zoning board will approve this plan.
You don't have to do that.
Or if you put the conditions...
You can put the conditions in the site plan review.
Not gonna waste your time. I mean, it's just, well, I'm not gonna... To make a business decision as to whether you go from four pumps to three pumps. Is that, you know what I'm saying? If that, I don't know if that's gonna be whether, what your family wants to do. That's what it comes down to. I, I mean, I...
Three pumps is fine with me, sir. That was what he recommended, he said, was the three pumps.
I recommended three, usually.
I wish you would've come in and talked to me before.
I know, I know.
Well, we can make, I mean, it's not time for, but I, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion to, to say that, um, to allow the projects. You don't have to come back to this step.
Thanks, sir.
But, but going from four pumps to three pumps and to, so what are we showing again?
Is there, why don't we, before we repeat ourselves, is there a motion by the board?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion. Could you help me with this, because I don't want, to, to, to accept the petition conditioned upon it going from...
Removal of the northern pump?
I, I would just think that they might wanna just move that whole thing halfway down. So if we say removal...
Right, that, that's what, exactly.
I think you want open up space on the rear.
That's what I'm gonna say. Hold on, that's what I'm gonna say. Yeah, I'm not gonna say whether, they, they can, they can work with site plan review where that's gonna be located. But it's not gonna be a three-pump as opposed to a four-pump approval with, with the canopy, consistent canopy. You, you wanna, you wanna tell them the size of the canopy now? Do you have that?
No, no, the size, well...
I think that there's some ambiguity...
Canopy can be the same size, right?
No, no, the canopy will reduce the size. The, the size will be smaller.
I think one of the things, if, so you, so you know exactly the, uh, dimensions that you're actually going to be, uh, exceeding. I, I don't know what your timeframe is, but is it reasonable to revise the plan and continue and revise the plan?
What is your next meeting? This is, but...
Then you will have the exact setbacks, and you'll get, and you'll know exactly what you're gonna get your variance for.
August 15.
What do you mean the setbacks? How's that gonna affect it?
Well, right now, they're, they're requesting a setback of 12.7 feet.
From the side, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, so...
And, and removing the northern canopy, I don't know what the exact setback would be. They probably wanna shift it down a tiny bit.
It might, I mean, if I shift it, I might be, I might be in compliance. No, it's not, it's not my compliance. Yes, um, I'm, I'm just thinking that if you approve not to exceed a certain distance from the property line, you know, uh... You know what?
Well, if you remove, if you remove the northern, uh, tank...
But I wanna shift the whole...
You will meet the 20-foot setback requirement.
No, but I think he's right. I'm gonna move it more northerly because I can get more room around there. Because I need to extend the landscape island. You on the property already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is all considered upon.
I need getting this variance to close, right? You already on it?
Yes, sir.
To reduce the size of this, so I push...
I, I recommend that you're, this, that you continue and revise it based on the comments.
Original plan on 90 cent with three pumps?
Yeah, but it's, no, yeah, it works. It doesn't have dimensions that can't, that can't...
I know, if we're gonna be voting on something, I want to...
I agree, I agree, I, I agree. I just, uh, and I, we appreciate that you're trying to help us not to come back for the next meeting. But I'm not sure when is your next meeting?
August 15.
August 15.
August 15.
Make a motion to table them, if they wanna come back.
Does that give you enough time to get the new plan done?
Uh, will give me enough time to do the plans. But we really appreciate what you were trying to do. But I think this is probably cleaner. This way you can act on...
Trying to get the project moving.
But, uh...
Good weather.
All right, there is a motion to table. Is there a second?
August meeting.
To the August meeting?
I'm sorry.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have my contact?
Uh, I, I can, yeah, I'll have a, or just, yeah, please, thank you.
Give me a call.
I'll send, yeah, I'll send you, once I have a site plan, I'll, I'll send you.
Are care of it still outside?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we really appreciate your help anyways. So we know we're on the right track.
Thank you. Want me to see if he's there?
Yeah, can you see him?
How are you? This Greg, right?
Thank you.
I handed you the, a look.
I didn't get any.
Petition?
Thank you.
Good evening.
We lost my papers?
Huh? Which petition, the one you just did?
Yeah.
Check inside the map. Maybe you pulled it in the map.
That's it? Uh, this is just the map?
Oh, never mind.
There it is.
I did just because of the actual detail.
They don't wanna meet with me, Breyer.
I know.
We're still on the record.
They're on the record.
We're still there. So do we have any citizens input? Did anybody sign up? No citizen input. Brittany says around the, the minutes for the April 2019 meeting. Is everybody hooked at them?
Waving of the reading and acceptance of minutes.
Motion to waive the reading and waive and accept the minutes as prepared. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? And so the April...